With a Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with a moment of silence for our troops who are fighting in Afghanistan and Iraq, and for those who lost their lives. Thank you, and good afternoon, and welcome to the date, the November 18th meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners. And we're going to begin with any public comment. And I know you are all here for an agenda item, so I don't think you're here for public comment. And so we'll just move right on to our first agenda item, which is the Cape Cod Water Protection Review Committee. And we're two members of the committee, Gussie McGyserick and Cheryl Andrews, and Elliot Carr was part of the review committee. And we're here to kind of talk about, I think, it would be a good idea to start with, what are the real positives with the Collaborative and the work that it's done? And what do we find that has worked really well? It's always, you know, we don't want to focus on things that maybe not have worked out, because I think if we talk about the things that work really well, they will lead us to where we, where we think we need to go, if we need to change any direction at all. So maybe we want to start with you, Andy?
Sure. You know, I think, and you've got Gussie sat on the review committee in addition, and Elliot did. And, you know, you've heard a fair bit from me thus far on the results of it, so I don't want to take the time that the others might want to participate. I think, you know, the review committee report found that, you know, on issues like helping to identify financing, resources, and the public outreach, and coordination, discussion, and learning between towns, the Collaborative has served a vital and useful function. And that, you know, those things were things that had been done, and done well, and, you know, are things that obviously need to continue, because you never educate people too much, and you can never find enough money to help them finance this. And towns will learn more as they go through the planning and implementation process, and they want to play on, it's useful to share with other towns. So I think by and large, those are things that the Collaborative, you know, rightfully should and has taken credit for. There've been other initiatives providing some financial support to towns to undertake some studies that their Collaborative has done reasonably well, and there's also been some opportunities for regulatory intervention with the state on various environmental regulations that directly or indirectly impact the options and the cost of implementing solutions that towns might have, that we've been able to, as a group, successfully intervene and create some room. So there are a number of, you know, of good things. I'd certainly say the review committee report was way more positive than negative. So I think those are the major achievements, and I'll defer to the others here if they want to address those in detail.
You know, just sort of intersperse this, but one of the positive things that came out of the report was the Business Roundtable has made a resolution that the status of wastewater infrastructure planning and implementation is an important goal for them. And I believe it was the momentum that was established by, you know, by the review committee report that, you know, that brought that forward. It had always been something that was very important to them, but they have that as the number one item in their review and overview of growth management activities. So I think that the committee report is acting as a nexus to draw external forces to, you know, to help and support, you know, the overall movement of, you know, of the outcome. I think that we, you know, we'd like to think that we have a, what I'd call, a solution mentality. And I think you heard me say this when, you know, when I gave the, when I showed up for your meeting, but there's so many good things that came out of it. And one of the things that I was really impressed with in the reports that we got from the various towns is the individual commitment by each of the towns to moving a wastewater agenda forward, which is something that says that we're now seeing more visible, or more, it's a more tangible evidence that the community is supporting it. And I think these are all good things, and things that we can use as a monument to sort of, you know, to sort of move this whole agenda forward. And I just thought, you know, put that in.
Well, the other thing that I noted about the letters we received from the selectmen from the various towns, I think we see Eastham, Dennis, Sandwich, yeah, was the, the comments they made regarding regional solutions, that they all really had strong feelings about the idea that regional solutions were going to be more effective, particularly in terms of cost. And I thought that was a real, a good positive statement to make, and sort of encouraging that towns are at least looking at that. I mean, even though they're looking at their own communities individually, they're still looking at the fact that, you know, there's coastline all around, and it's all shared, for the most part, or it's at least shared by more than one town. So I thought that was pretty positive. The thing that I hear all the time, it really is the financing, and how is this going to work? And people offer different suggestions, but what they all say is that the cost of doing nothing is not possible. And they all, every group that I have attended, at least in the town or island, I've been to several of the groups where these ideas have been presented, and they all end up saying, doing nothing is just simply not an option. It's something we have to do, but we have to find a way to finance it that could somehow, I don't like to use the word, be acceptable to everyone, but something that may be, some kind of an option that will work for everyone. And how you get there, I think that's, I have no clue how to get there, or what the role the county might have.
Well, it's an interesting discussion that's been initiated by your former town manager, Peter Boarder-Falmliff, you know, looking at doing some modeling. And what it really comes down to is finding ways to spread out the cost among enough people that even though the aggregate number is really big, that the impact on the individual homeowner and taxpayer is something that's manageable, not negligible, but manageable. And so I think towns are looking for guidance that I think the county can provide and help with, and thinking through financial models that provide some real relief to towns, and more to the residents than the towns themselves. The towns are going to be taking on significant debt burdens, and I don't think there's a heck of a lot of a way around that, that question. And so I think one of the challenges in the next five years is coming up as a county assuming a more prominent role in helping towns think through the financing options that are available to them.
There's another piece on the financing option, and I think it's very important. You may remember that back in the beginning, when we started the process of going out and recruiting the involvement of the towns, that the biggest concern that I was stating at that time, and I believe that Tom Benato said the same thing, was that we were concerned that if we did not act to create something that moved this process forward, we would then be under an aegis of judicial rather than legislative action. And it was, and if you think that it would be expensive, expensive for us to act independently, to respond to an arbitrary order from the court, which doesn't leave you any leeway or any, you know, any opportunity to take what I would call the least impactful solutions, that we would lose control of it, and then, you know, we would be at the mercy of the, you know, of the courts. And this is something that would be, you know, I think that this was one piece, I think that everybody understood, that, you know, that supported the, you know, the creation of the collaborative. So, and yet, the one thing that wasn't, you know, that didn't come through at that time was the commitment to looking at financial models. Financial models is where this, you know, where this thing goes or doesn't go. And if we don't have that, you know, if we don't have a commitment to a particular model or have a model that we can test, I think that that's where, you know, that puts us behind the, you know, our ability to actually get to the, you know, to the end of this process. We all, I think we all have a very clear problem statement, you know, I think we all know what we're trying to address. What we don't, what we don't address is which solution avenue are we pursuing in order to come up with, let's say, with what I would call a solution that supports both the interest of the, of the problem. In other words, we don't want to, we don't want a sagittal bridge, you know, where we, where we fix the problem, but we basically, you know, sort of, you know, what do you call it, antagonize everybody that, you know, that has to use the bridge. We have to have, we somehow have to look at the side effects of the solution to see how we can manage them. So I think that that's the, that's the thing that I'm hoping that, you know, that when you and Paul come back with your, you know, recommendation, that that would include, you know, a, let's say, a commitment to looking at that particular idea.
Well, I think the litigation risk now is higher than it was when Collaborative created. You know, so clearly, there's a degree of impatience out there in some corners that feels that the initiatives, as productive as they've been, haven't moved to solution as quickly as they ought to, or may not, because of people's concerns about money. And so, you know, one of the tried and true strategies on wastewater management is take control of the decision-making away from those that are responsible for paying for it, and hand them a bill. You know, and so that's clearly an issue. And I think, you know, one of the issues that came out of the review committee report was really emphasizing, and the county playing a strong role in helping towns pursue cost savings through regionalization. And that the, you know, the work that, some of the work that's been sponsored and paid for by the Collaborative has borne out the assumption that we all held, which was that regionalized solutions both lower cost and reduce the amount of infrastructure that needs to be constructed when compared to go-it-alone solutions by two or three communities adjoining one another. And so, you know, part of the strategy here, I think, is to try to not just make the money cheaper, which is really the emphasis of what's been done in the last couple of years with the change of the SRF, but reduce the amount of money that's needed by limiting the amount of infrastructure that's required by regionalization. And I think that's something that, as you know from your efforts to encourage regionalization and other avenues across the Cape, regionalization's hard.
Yeah.
Regionalization's hard. And in some cases, towns are able to take steps on regionalization on their own. Some want to do it, but need a little bit of assistance in order to get there, and some need a little bit more gentle encouragement. And I think that, you know, that's, that's one of the elements that was underpinning some of the recommendations to the review committee. But again, you've got folks from the review committee here who can speak to those things.
Yeah. I think because there is a recommendation from the review committee, and we should really talk about that, creating a governing board, you know, what the merits of that are, and I think we're all interested in hearing not only what the members of the Collaborative think about that, but also some comments from the review committee. Gussie, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you for appointing me to this committee. I didn't need another committee in my life in the summertime, but it was very gratifying to sit with people who had broad experience and to sort of dump it all on the table. And I think one of the things that was most surprising to me is when you look back at the last decade, a decade ago, we were trying to convince people there's a problem. We've solved that. Everybody, everybody's now on the same page, so we have to do it, and we do. One of the things we did that I think was most interesting on the Collaborative was talk about why in the area of regionalization that there were hurdles that we just couldn't seem to jump over as a group. And I think full responsibility is being in a leadership role during that time, and, you know, not being able to pull that off. But we spent a lot of time saying, well, you know, it's not the people, because they all are, you know, part of the choir, and we're all on the same page here, but what, what is it that makes it difficult? And there are lots of things we talked about. But I think one of the prime things we came to grips with were the people that were coming to the Superior Court every month faithfully were not the ones that either had the ear of the deciders at home, or were part of the deciders at home, and were doing a very good job, but going home and having limited places to put those good ideas to work and haven't been heard. So there was a disconnect. And we said, okay, if this is, if this is really part of the problem, we ought to talk about it a lot more, but how do we give this body the tools to get over that hurdle? And the answer that we came forward with may not be the right answer, but I think the problem that we identified was very real, and certainly something that has to be addressed and brainstormed about, and see how we get over that. It, it's difficult when you have a group of hardworking people that, after they get together, they have no place to put those efforts. And that was, that was one of the things that came out of the group. And jump in if I haven't got it all right.
Anybody else want to comment on that? George, welcome.
Yes, I've read the letters that were submitted by the various towns who would prefer to keep the system the way it is. And I also read the editorial in the Cape Cod Times, which you've seen, which recommends the solution that the review committee came up with. I missed the first meeting of the review committee because of a conflict, but I attended all of the others. And apparently in the first meeting, there was enough feeling amongst the people attending, and I'm not sure who attended, but that there should be a second group. And as we discussed it in the following meetings, it seemed to make sense to me. There's a parallel situation with the Human Rights Commission. The Human Rights Commission, we have human rights commissioners and also an advisory group with one member from every town, and I think it's worked out pretty well. And we started the Human Rights Commission less than five years ago. I've attended meetings of the Human Rights Commission, and the advisory group, and it seems to be important to have people on the, on a commission who know something about the subject. I don't know anything about the backgrounds, excepting a couple of people on the, on the Collaborative. Are there any people who've ever had a course in hydraulics?
The representative from Howard has a PhD.
Are there any civil engineers? Are there people who would know at least where to start, or have some rough idea of what's necessary, if sewer systems are needed? This process is going to go on, maybe not at the county level, but on the Cape, of considering sewers or alternatives to sewers for the next 20 years, which is, we have to build a good base. And I think the, the solution that the, that the review committee came up with is a good one. And I recommend it. We need people with a background. We have lots of wonderful people on the Cape who've had careers in all sorts of subjects in engineering. Those are the people we really need. The alumni groups of various institutions should be contacted. I know the MIT group on Cape Cod is very active. I very seldom go, but you have a storehouse of people. I remember in the original charter commission for the county, it was a pre-charter commission, we had a retired engineer from the Bureau of Reclamation who lived in Eastham. And he could really think things through, and he organized things in a way that most of the members couldn't. So we need to have you find some good people to really put sense to the projects as they come along.
Well, you make a really good point, George, because I think-
Pardon me?
I said you make a very good point about having people who are hydrologists or have some type of scientific understanding of either, you know, microbiology or biology or what have you. I had an opportunity to meet with a group of scientists a couple of weeks ago, one Saturday morning. And, and that's what we talked about, was this, the whole idea of the science behind some of this. And I found it to be very useful. And the other thing towns have been talking about too is nutrient management bylaws, because some people fear that once you have sewers, then it will increase growth. And so how do you do both? I mean, how, or how do you actually create a system for sewer-ing perhaps, and then not have growth happen? And you wait, the way to do that is to have a bylaw that, that relates to that, and doesn't allow that to happen in certain areas. And I just wondered, do you have any idea how many towns have nutrient management bylaws, or actually have begun to look at how to control growth with, in areas where it's sewer?
I think what's important is the DEP is just about ready to release the regulations that talk about what they will accept as growth neutral tools.
That's the term.
And our particular channel, and I can always speak from being deeply involved in that, is we tried to think of the parallel tasks that had to be accomplished along with a committee working on wastewater. And we realized we had to review our charter, change the charter, create a sewer commission. So two years ago, that went through town meeting, and then it went through the ballot. So even as we move ahead, there are a lot of parallel tasks. Our Board of Health created a nutrient regulation, and as you know, when a Board of Health puts a regulation in, it doesn't go to town meeting, doesn't go to the ballot, it has public hearings and goes. And basically, we said there's only going to be one bedroom for 10,000 square feet. And we looked around and saw how much that would really save the town, and it would cap things so that you couldn't have this exponential growth. That took us about two years to pass, but on a parallel course, we did that. And I think when the DEP regulations come out, they will be talking very specifically about what is acceptable. Are they Board of Health regs? Are they bylaws? Maybe you can speak to them a little more clearly. You have some indication of what that's going to be.
Yeah.
But that's clearly part of what you have to have in place to get the zero interest SRF.
Yeah, I mean, the, the DEP regs are relatively flexible in accepting any cluster of local regulations, whether they take the form of board bylaws, sewer use rules, or zoning changes. As long as the town can demonstrate pre and post development patterns will not result in any net increase in flow in the aggregate, then they'll be able to get qualified for the zero interest program. So it can take whatever form makes the most sense in any given community. Most towns I talk to think they've cracked the code, you know, they've done it. And I think, you know, once the state criteria are in place, they'll be able to sort of get more, somewhat more, I don't know if I call it objective, but, you know, review by an external source as to whether or not it actually meets the limits or it doesn't meet the limit. Certainly, you know, Chatham believes that they've done it with their sewer connection rules that they've put in place since they're sewer-ing everything. A couple of the towns are moving along. I also think that they've done their growth piece. I think that the likelihood is that most are going to have to take the opportunity to digest the DEP rules and probably adjust somewhat.
There's a concern that I hope to be able to-
Yeah, Elliot.
Yeah, just a few thoughts. Let me say first, I believe in towns. I've said sort of frivolously for a while, and then I thought about it, I think the country would be better off if all the things had to go through the broach to town meetings on Congress. And I really believe that might be so, but, but two comments. There's been a little discussion of litigation, and I think there's also got to be a lot of consideration of when does the price of not doing something become greater than the price of doing something? And there are two people from P-Town in the row in front of me, in Province Town, and it clearly came to that point, their, the price of not doing, and to their credit act that is, and this one, you're not going to know sometimes when you're crossing that line, but, but it's a little bit related to, there's been a lot of press, well-covered, I think, in the Cape Cod Times about National Geographic saying Cape Cod is right on the cusp, and don't think these things are all related. I mean, the world is looking at Cape Cod right now, and what kind of a job are we going to do to protect our environment? And wastewater's a big part of that. And I don't think most of the people get it yet, frankly. But the other thing I'd like to say, and maybe this is just a personal confession, but if you, again, if you look at a lot of other issues, there's a relationship between this and the bridge. And the relationship is that our whole society from Washington down is having more and more difficulty for a variety of reasons dealing with infrastructure. I mean, no new taxes and a lot of these things that are, the infrastructure is collapsing in a lot of respects. And this gift to my personal thought, I think if you look at the successes, where have they overcome it the most? Unfortunately, the MWRAs, well, it's all where three or four good people were given the authority. And I think this, this clearly is a problem, I'm not against consortiums or collaboratives and 15-town input, but it's clearly a problem where you've got to find some good people and give them as much power as you can to get the job done. And that was the main thought of what I was trying to say through that study.
Well, when we look at the, at the recommendations by the review committee, particularly where they outline the responsibilities and the functions, and, and you actually list that the Collaborative, subject to the approval and authorization of the commissioners, shall have authority to discharge, but not be limited to, the following responsibilities consistent with the Administrative Code of Barnstable County. The first is establish the regional wastewater management plan in conjunction with county staff. I think that's a really important recommendation. And I think that's something that probably we need to explore as a county, as to how, how we would work with the Collaborative in terms of coming up with, with that, or how you can help us do that.
Well, we've got underway, you know, we've been working on a contractual basis with the commission in earnest on this issue since probably March of this year, to come up with, you know, the planning documents needed, largely, not even documents, probably wrong way to put it, the sort of the information layers needed to sort of come up with county policy on regional wastewater management. And if you'd like, we can have Paul and Patty come in and brief you on sort of the status of that work. Because I think it's made some, made some significant strides in moving towards having the county be able to articulate a vision about what's appropriate on wastewater management. That particular provision is, is an authority that currently exists and is expected of the Collaborative. That's frankly one of the things that wasn't subject to change and was carried over in the recommended authorities from the current, the current ordinance requirements, and would continue forward in that, because I think everybody recognizes the need to set some county expectations. I think a lot of what underlies philosophically what the next five years ought to look like assumes an ability by the county through the commissioners, and then filtered down through the operating agencies, the ability to articulate some expectations and standards that towns will be expected to meet if they're to, you know, receive sign-off on CW Conference of Wastewater Management Plans that are, or the sign-off on the zero, compliance with the zero interest standards requires a coherence between the town's plan and what the, what the county's overall plan is. And I think at the, at the, the report sort of envisions the commitment to regionalization being a presumption, a presumption at the county level. It doesn't mean that, that in all cases, that's ultimately what's going to get constructed, but the sort of regulatory and financial assumption would be that that's where you're going, and if a town doesn't want to go that route, they have to demonstrate to the county satisfaction in order to get the zero interest with the sign-off on the wastewater plant, why the regional solution doesn't make sense in that particular instance. So it's really sort of flipping, flipping things around in a sense of, rather than letting everything sort of grow organically up, and then the county looks at things, being able to say, from the top, this is our presumption about what things are important. You don't have to demonstrate, you don't have to comply with that presumption, but if you're not going to- if you're not going to, you need to be able to demonstrate why it doesn't make sense. Town next to you wasn't interested in playing ball, for whatever reason, because of the nature of the communities and the areas where you might sewer, it didn't make financial sense to share facilities, whatever the combination of reasons might be.
Well, it brings up, again, going back to the bridge analogy.
Yeah.
Enough for nothing, I'm a like member of the Electrical Engineering Society, and if you gave me the job as an engineer, I could solve the problem, and I could put things in place. Politically, it'd probably be a disaster, just like the bridges. So the issue becomes, if we can identify through a financial model what it's going to cost and where the first place it should go, I think that that would be the most important thing to start with. Because that way, we could build off of that. We have examples in four towns now, is it, or five? Province Town, Chatham, Orleans, you know, have done significant work, and we should be able to get some figures of merit as to what it would cost to do that. What I think would be useful is, could we take those numbers and apply them to, you know, to, let's say, to similar situations in other communities and say, this is what we would estimate you're looking at as a target number? Because that has been all too nebulous.
Yeah, as part of that regional plan, and I spent some time with Patty and my gig this afternoon, part of that regional plan are a set of cost curves that basically say, you know, make some, you know, generic assumptions, because any model would, you know, of linear feet of connection needed, certain quantity of, you know, so on a per foot basis, if you're doing this much, you know, collection systems, it's going to cost you this per foot. And then, you know, for different sized treatment facilities, you know, what the cost curves are. And so it'll let the towns replace themselves on the curve and say, you know, I think I need to dispose of a million gallons a day, and we think we're going to need, you know, roughly X feet of, you know, collection main and X feet of connections to homes. Where does this put me? And so it at least allows the towns to sort of get, you know, some general approximation of where they end up on the cost curve. You then need the lower layer and say, okay, how are we going to distribute that cost fairly and equitably among our ratepayers? And do we go, you know, whole betterment, whole tax rate, some blended? Do we use SRF money? Do we go after, you know, USDA grant money, as Chatham has chosen to on the construction of their treatment plant component of their project? Or, you know, do we look to do, you know, utilize provisions of the environmental bond bill that allows to extend betterments and borrowing over a longer period of time? So we're paying more in interest over a period of time, but on a cash flow basis, we've been able to stretch it out for people, make it affordable. And all that stuff's coming and should be part of the regional plan. And again, we can come in and talk about that at some length.
See, I think that would be really helpful, because the commission does have those resources to be able to look at the planning piece to this. Because I'm thinking, because I live on the Upper Cape, so I think about some of those issues more, even though I know what's going on. But I think of Mashpee, who's really looking at a lot of clustering, perhaps. But Mashpee has land, which some of the other towns don't have. And so that makes a lot of sense for them to move to clustering. But suppose they were, there was an area that neibred Sandwich, and that area of Sandwich could benefit from a cluster, too. Is it possible to do one that might benefit an area that would cover both towns?
Simple answers, yes.
Yeah, it would. So how do we come up with agreements? Is that maybe our role as a county? To come up with MOUs that maybe towns could use to move those kinds of...
I think the documents are actually the easy part.
Oh, okay.
You know, the...
The negotiations.
The hard part is being able to step out of your own skin a little bit as a town, as representative of your town, and look across the border to see, you know, is there an opportunity? Even if that opportunity means bringing somebody else's wastewater into my town. Yeah, that's kind of the sort of, you know, taboo. You know, so to look to see, you know, from, you know, and the report really starts from the resource and works its way up. If the resource, if the bay is the patient, you know, you figure out, you know, where's the problem? And then move, you know, find the sources of the problem. If it exists in two towns, get those two towns to talk together to figure out, you know, how you best treat that patient in order to get the best outcome at the lowest cost.
Now, you're bringing up an interesting point as far as collaboration, because in Turo and Province Town, Turo supplies the water, and Province Town puts it back into the water table, so it does not recharge the aquifer that's supporting the delivery of the water. So somehow or other, that, you know, that is a piece that, you know, that says, how do you address that kind of a problem? And again, that depends upon the cooperation between those two communities in order to find that out. So the question would be, what are you doing to, you know, to address that? And do you need our help in order to move that forward?
I've been quiet, because I wasn't on the review committee. So I'm here as the audience. But you're reading my mind, because I was chairman of our Water and Sewer Board and sat on what we ultimately named the PLOT, which was the Panel Lends Oversight Group, which was two folks from Turo, two folks from Province Town plus staff, to talk about the issues that affect the two towns regardless of where the line is. And I think it's one of the experiences I bring to the collaborative as far as being right in the thick of the screaming, frankly. And I won't say the screaming has stopped. It's always going to be there, but the models are there, the MOUs are there. I, as you know, am not in favor of the recommendation and the restructuring, but I think the general sense of where some of the ideas of how we could get the towns to work together better, I think the ideas are out there, and I'm hoping to see more of them percolate into the collaborative. Certainly, the PLOT that we have with our two towns is a model.
Well, let me ask you a question about that, Cheryl. What, you know, there's good and bad. What was good and successful, and what wasn't?
Well, believe it or not, education is always a huge thing. And finding out exactly what it is that town next door to you is concerned about, as opposed to reading about it in paper, or even being at a, you know, at a public meeting in front of a television set. Politicians, and I've known this one long enough, so I don't mean, you know, to cast any aspersions, but many of us sometimes get grandiose when we're negotiating with a neighboring town. And so you don't get to the heart of what's really behind it. For example, Turo was concerned that our water consumption was going up and up. For years, Province Town didn't answer that question. But then we did. And we started getting the data. And, you know, you asked about growth control. Province Town actually put in a growth management bylaw before we had the sewer. And the number one impetus behind that bylaw was water. Because, believe it or not, in the middle of all this, the state turned around and said that they had made a mistake on our permit, and they actually cut our permitted groundwater withdrawal permit. I think it was by about 10%, it was 150,000 gallons, it was pretty outrageous. But they did it. And so this bylaw went in, I think it was around 89, it was in 1989. They basically put in this bylaw relating growth in our town to our ability to tolerate it in terms of resources. When the sewer was brought in, the same question was asked, well, is this going to throw a wrench into that? And so we doubled up and had a whole new set of sewer zoning regulations to control what would happen to the properties on the sewer. So it can be done, it's just a question of...
Suggesting a process. And the process was growth management, say, a growth bylaw first in order to set, let's say, an accepted level of, let's say, of growth, then putting in the tools or the infrastructure to support it. Then the next step is to find out how much it costs. I guess that's what you did.
Well, where there's a will, there's a way, is my answer.
Political will.
You may call it growth management or nutrient management, I think either way, it accomplishes the same thing, but sometimes it's like a bitter pill. It may be swallowed more easily if it talks about nutrient management and growth, I don't know. But you raised another point about the education. And I think building community consensus around these wastewater plans is really critical to make it happen. And I think maybe that's an area where the collaborative and the county can work together. I remember years ago, back in the 80s, when we had all the contamination on the Upper Cape from the plumes from the base. And one of the things that the towns were able to achieve by working with the military was to do public education and to build community consensus. And I remember, they actually hired people, facilitators, from the Consensus Building Institute, which is a group somewhere around here that does that. And I thought that might be something that we could do as a county, is to help put together a consensus building plan for the towns. So they could make that happen. Because unless you have community consensus around these projects, it's going to be pretty tough.
Just speaking out loud, we've had success in putting focus groups together for the Cape Cod Commission, and discovered in that, that although we were told, and continue to be told, that the Cape is in favor of a large development strategy, the last two surveys that we took through the Cape Cod Commission said, the majority of people that responded to the survey said they felt we weren't doing enough to regulate and stop development, which was, you know, which was very counterintuitive in terms of what the conventional wisdom was. So perhaps a role for us, just speaking out loud, would be to convene a focus group to find out what the community says is an acceptable way to approach the solution of this problem. I think that everybody would agree that there is a problem, everybody would agree that something needs to be done about it. But I think at this point, I think that the nexus has to be around what are both creative and acceptable solutions that, you know, that provide a reasonable path to, you know, let's say, to getting, to completing, you know, what has been started.
One of the big points of contention at places where sewer-ing is taking place is whether the town is going to pay for it, or whether the individual people who are connected to it are going to have to come up with a big lump.
Well, George, I sincerely believe that anything that maintains the pristine nature of the community, even if it's just in one part of the community, that there's some need for a whole community to participate.
If you're faced with 20, 30, 40,000 dollar bill, and you're on social security, that's a big lump.
I think it's not going to be either or, it'll be some of both.
Province Town, that's what happened. They were faced with hooking up, whereas the whole town didn't pay for it. And that was a decision made by a group that was planning all of this.
Right, we did touch on that a little bit before you came in, that we don't have solutions yet, but we know that there have to be solutions around it, and we have to understand the economic level of...
Cuts is the pocketbook, the cuts is the soul, as Herman Zellweger used to say in Province Town, stand up and pat his wallet. And it's frightening for a lot of people.
Honey talks and...
You may remember that 20 years ago, there was a lot of discussion about sewer-ing and waste disposal on the Cape. And once in a while, you'll come up to a stop sign somewhere in the woods here, and it says, "Stop the outfall pipe."
Yes, and we were both on the assembly when we voted to support the sewer against the state.
The assembly was involved in all of that. And we worked very hard on it. I organized two tours of the MWRA stations. Bill, I think you were on the assembly.
Yes, I was.
The second one was in February of 1999. We took a bus up there, and the MWRA showed us the more or less complete station.
The Deer Island, yeah. Does that remember the argument we had with the tertiary treatment? Because they had secondary treatment, but we wanted to see tertiary treatment because of the flow of effluent coming out of Deer Island and the possibility of it coming back to Cape Cod Bay, like the New Jersey effluent coming up to New York.
One of the biggest opponents of leaving it only at secondary was Bruce Ferman, who teaches at Boston University. I had the pleasure of listening to him at the Maritime Academy about four years ago on a symposium was held there. And he stood up and said, "It's the best thing that ever happened." And I think I had not heard anyone complain about the effluent from the outfall pipe recently. And of course, there's a lot of monitoring going on, the MWRA would like to cut it back. But the first time we went up there was about 10 years before that. I prepared the literature, I did all of the organizing and the bus tour with the MWRA. We went there, and it was, the sewer treatment plant was incomplete. The digestors, those huge things that you see from the plane, were not complete. When we went there a second time, they pulled, of course, a glass of water out of the secondary chamber, and the sea hull cleared it, of course, that doesn't mean it's clean, but it was very clear water. That was their way of showing us how much they'd done, and of course, it was... First time we went there, they injected the sludge into the harbor at low tide, as the tide went out. This was huge, dark brown spout that came up. Of course, that was all eventually shipped to Quincy, where they have another plant that dries it out and sells it. People were interested in what was happening, and education is very much a part of it.
Well, just to summarize where we've sort of been in this discussion, we've touched a little bit on both. We've talked about a waste management plan and how it affects communities and what their needs are. And we've also talked about the review committee and what some of their recommendations are. And I think you touched on the fact that some of the members of the collaborative are not the deciders, and there needs to be a way to figure out how to help them feed into the decision-making people or committees or boards or whatever in their own towns. And I think that's something that maybe the collaborative itself can look at, because you work at it, and some are doing it and some aren't. So maybe you can figure out how each one of them can help themselves to do it. And then we talked about the growth management tools, and what towns may have them and what towns don't. Those that did it successfully prepared themselves, for instance, in Province Town. And Elliot made some really good suggestions about town meeting in terms of democracy and how it might work better, but also alluded to other...
In spite of the emotional context.
That's right. And you talked about the focus groups, and we talked about the education of the people in the towns, the consensus building around these wastewater projects, so that they'll be understood and accepted by the people in the towns. And then the other elephant in the room is the financial models. And what are they? And how are people really going to pay for this? And how is the town and the county and the individual homeowners and businesses be? How are we going to be able to create a financial model that people can afford to work with? So I think we could keep going on about this, but I think you've given us some good things to move with. And I like Andy's suggestion that we have Paul and Patty Daly come in and talk about what the commission is doing. And in terms of planning and technical support, how they might be able to not only help us, maybe help the collaborative, before the commissioners move into any decision-making mode on the recommendations to the review committee. That's where I think we are right now.
I think that that's where we are.
Good. So unless, does anyone else have anything that they might like to say on that topic this afternoon? If not, it won't be the last time you have a chance to speak.
I just think it's very important we look on this whole kicking the hive, as Andrew said this morning, as a possibility time, a positive time. And I think the dialogue has started, and I think we really have some clear goals and clear ideas. And if we can strategically lay this out, how we do it, and how we transition that Wednesday group into each and every town to make effective, it's going to...
I think it's important for us as commissioners to articulate what our expectations are. And I think that that would be one of the things that would come out of, you know, our whole look at this. Because, you know, I think that if people know what's expected of them, then I think that clears the path for whether or not it's a reasonable expectation or not. Because that's certainly something that people can become very upset about, is that expectations weren't met, and perhaps that wasn't clearly articulated as to what the expectations were. So I think that that would be one thing that we should include in our discussions with Paul and Patty and Andrew come back and talk to us.
Yeah.
The only other comment I would add, I think you'll probably get some kind of request or memo from the steering committee of the collaborative. Because we're, well, I'll speak for myself and say that when this whole process went down, as far as the review committee and the report, I started thinking, okay, the simple thing is to look at the report and say whether you agree with it or not. But what about a more progressive thought process, which is, well, what would be my opinion about how we could go into the next five years and accomplish our goals? What do I agree with, what don't I, and what things could be done? And I think the collaborative, at least the steering committee, started to talk about that at our meeting last week, that while we might not agree with the recommendations... That while we might not agree with the recommendations of the review committee for some very obvious reasons, and it has to do with politics, politics of acceptance from the towns. But I think there were some comments and ideas expressed in the review committee report that we could take and have a discussion about and bring back to you as far as what we, where we think it could go. So, um, I think there's a dialogue that might be able to be, have, happen between the steering committee and the commissioners as well.
I would agree with that. And I, I think the, the review committee did a really good job on this. And I, and I always think, at least from my perspective, I always like to look at what, what is working well, what isn't working well. And what can we take from both? What can we take from your review of this? And what can we take from what the review committee presented to us? And how can we take all this and formulate a, a vision for the future in terms of how we're gonna make this happen on the Cape? You know, huge job, but, but we can do it. Right?
I know you can.
He can do it. All right. Thank you very much.
I'd be honest, I ran the water management program. We took away your water.
I wanted to sue you. I wouldn't go along with me.
Well, this won't be the last time, this won't be the last time we talk about this, so stay tuned. And thank you all for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Andy. Thank you, Elliot. That was our main topic of discussion.
It was the only topic of discussion on the agenda. Now we have other, other business.
We have other issues to take on. Well, the next thing we could do is we could run the commissioner's actions.
Okay. Oh, I have one question.
Here's all the stuff.
Yeah. Signatures, number four.
Wait, wait, anyway.
CCC and...
Oh, programs between housing authorities and Wampanoag tribe. What does TAP, what does TAP grant?
All their Scott work.
What does TAP stand for? TAP?
I'm sorry, Bill, we're...
Number six.
Execute four agreements?
Uh, I, I guess I told her.
Has something to do with housing.
Yeah. I just wonder what, you know, what we're doing with the Wampanoag tribe in Mashpee.
Lovely.
We're giving them some grants. They're eligible, they're an eligible entity.
Welfare Housing Barstow.
Yeah. Oh, wouldn't, that wouldn't change their status.
I went to a really interesting workshop yesterday while you're looking that up on the, on municipal housing trusts and how they can be effective in creating affordable housing in a community. Outside from the type of housing trusts we have now pretty much around the Cape. This would be actually formed by the town.
Technical assistance program, I think that's TAP.
That's a topic for another day.
I'm sorry, Pat, what did you say?
I was talking about municipal housing trusts, where they can use CPA and...
Well, actually, you know, Paul Werschenkis is coming in on this second.
Oh, good. We can talk about that, to talk about municipal housing. There's one, Dennis has one.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, a number of other towns have them.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to talk a little bit about this Forestale.
Oh, let's vote this first.
Okay, I'll vote, uh, vote to...
Move to approve twenty-seven items?
Twenty-seven items.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, done. Motion carries. With two. Isn't that great?
Unanimous.
Yes, unanimous vote. Excellent. Okay. You're next.
Yeah, the Forestale project, uh, colleague Chris Bailey, who is in the town of Sandwich and was on their economic development, uh, committee, has brought a project that they're working on to become eligible for, or he's asking us for support in, uh, exploring the use of recovery zone facility bonds from Barnstable County to finance the development of Forestale Village and Sandwich. So, uh, I began, I, I started asking some questions about it. I, I got some, uh, you know, some information from him. I talked to, uh, let's say to, to members of the community about, you know, what they knew about it or didn't know about it. I talked to Paul Mizwicki about what the Cape Cod Commission had been doing because that's what Sheila had suggested that we, you know, we bring into it. And I've talked to Mark and perhaps, uh, Mark would be the best one at this point to, to tell us whether or not there's an eligibility...
Well, I, I don't think we're ready to determine that at this point in time, Bill. I think what we can tell you is, you know, Chris has expressed interest in their recovery zone facilities bonds. We have an allocation under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, um, uh, for both economic development zone bonds and recovery zone bonds. And we're working to kind of piece together how those bonds would work. Um, and if I understand it, those would be tax exempt bonds issued by a private entity. It would actually be mass development that would issue the bonds on behalf of this private issuer. Um, for Barnstable County, it's total eight point five four four million dollars in allocation. You have to allocate your proportion of the bonds by March thirty-first of two thousand and ten or you, the, the, the existing counties kind of lose their ability to allocate it. It falls back to the state and then the bonds have to be issued by December thirty-first, two thousand and ten. So it's a very short timeframe. There's a number of criteria, um, that the IRS has established in order to be use these bonds. Um, I believe Chris's project falls within that. I believe he's looked at the criteria he believes they are. I think what we need to do next is, and there's a meeting on this. Um, Troy Clarkson in Plymouth has been sponsoring, I think this will be the second meeting, kind of it's an informational meeting on how these work. I wasn't able to attend the first one, but I will be going. It's on Monday in Plymouth. Uh, Mass Development will be there. Troy will be there. People from, I think, Executive Office of Housing and Community Development will be there. Uh, so we'll find out more about, I think what we'll need to do though, although I don't, don't think we need to do a competitive process, that's purely our choice. Um, we should probably do some sort of marketing to see what kind of interest may be out there, both for the economic development bonds and for the facility bonds. And there are two different kind of categories of use, so...
What, uh, the, I guess the thing that, you know, that is important to me is the prospect of an additional, uh, projection of two hundred and twenty-three full-time permanent jobs.
Well, that's certainly one of the criteria that you have to fulfill in order to be eligible for the bonds.
Is job creation?
Job creation, yeah. There's a, there's a number of criteria out there.
What about, um, now, you say these are tax exempt bonds that, of the private sector would be eligible for?
There's two categories, as I mentioned. There's economic development zone bonds. Those are for municipalities. Um, however, those are taxable bonds. But the federal government gives you a forty-five percent subsidy on the interest that you pay on the bonds. The facility bonds are tax exempt. Um, and those are to be issued for private, um, development. And so those really are issued at a tax exempt rate, a more like a muni rate. So those are very attractive, especially to private entities. And as I said, they'd be issued by Mass Development on behalf of that. It's called like a third-party issuance. Um, the thing, let me go back just to the economic development zone bonds. The issue I see with those, I've done a little bit of analysis on them, is really the spread. Because they're taxable bonds, they're issued at a taxable rate, it's higher rate. And depending on what that rate is, and I, the analysis I did is if you issue those and say the taxable rate is about seven point seven percent, even with the forty-five percent, um, subsidy on the interest, a muni issuance for the same term, twenty years, at four percent is cheaper.
Oh, yeah.
So there may be less attraction for municipalities on the economic development zone bonds than there's going to be for the private individuals who are eligible for the facility zone bonds.
So if it were a public-private partnership, say, could the private part of it be eligible for the, um, um, the facilities bonding?
Uh, I believe, yeah, because the private use, uh, issues, which are very tight under the IRS, um, rules and the, the, I think it was the Tax Act back, the Municipal Tax Act back in eighty-six, revised and tightened very much the kind of municipal, the good rule, the laws governing the issuance of municipal debt. Um, for this particular, the recovery zone bonds, they've loosened that private issuance issue. Basically, I can't issue, uh, if I have a private-public building that I wanna build for the private portion, I can't use tax exempt debt to do that. It's very difficult to structure that. So I think they've loosened the rules on this, so I think the answer...
Now, I'm, I was thinking about Open Cape. If they were to get some of their money and they're a nonprofit, would they be eligible to borrow a tax exempt money to, uh, they...
I believe they would, yes.
Their communications center?
I believe they would.
Yeah. So that would be...
Because they're a private entity.
They're a private entity. So that would be, even though...
They're, 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 was it accessing a larger part of money than this is?
Yeah, they're trying to get forty million grand. They're, they're looking for a grant fund. But if they don't get it all or if they, the only issue might be on timing on this. Because the allocation, as I said, has to be by March two thousand and ten where we lose our authority on the allocation and it quickly kind of reverts back to the state.
Right.
And the bonds have to be issued by the end of two, next year, basically. So you have to be shovel-ready, really.
And, and this is what he's, you know, he's emphasizing here. So the question for me is what, you know, what do we need to do and what, I'd say within the limitations of our responsibility, what can we do to help this process? And what, you know, and, and what shouldn't we be doing?
Uh, you shouldn't be committing any of your allocation yet because we're, we're not at that point. I think, you know, the wisest course of action, although I would say may not be a pure RFP where, you know, you, you know, you do an R, a formal RFP. I think we should do some advertising that these are available, that we have this allocation. So we see what is out there. There's, no one can come back and say to you, oh, yeah, you handed all of that to those. I didn't know about that. I have a better project.
Looks like there's a reporter in the room who might help us with that.
Well, you know...
Well, I think we want to make sure that we do it in a way where we're prepared to give all the details and I'm not at that point yet. I think after Monday's meeting, we'll be a lot stronger in terms of where we are. I'll have a chance to talk about, you know, how, more details about how this works with Mass Development and those such things.
Because the other thing I'm thinking of is in the project for Forest, Forestale project.
Yeah.
Is there, wouldn't we require some sort of a pro forma? I mean, for instance, if they have, they're going to be leasing, uh, space to businesses and all of that. You'd have to have some sort of a pro forma where you have tenants that have agreed to move in or something like that before, some kind of criteria that we could have before we would actually declare somebody eligible.
Well, even to allocate the bonds, there's a set of criteria that have to be...
Yeah, that has to be...
And indeed, there's some, some of that is in here. I don't know if there's...
Is that the, uh, the summary of the, of the...
I don't know if this is the same thing that you'd shown me.
Plymouth has an easy one because they wanna help, uh, provide funding in the Plymouth Rock studios.
Yeah, no, this is his, this is his bill.
That's like the advertising.
Yeah, that's his, that's his. That's not on the recovery zone bond. But in the recovery zone bond summary, there's a whole list of the criteria.
Okay. And the issue for the, for somebody like, you know, this particular, I know that they went to town meeting and they got a zoning change. And the zoning change that they got would allow this project to go forward in that place. But there was not, there was a, I, there was an implied connection, but it wasn't, you know, it, it was one of these, if you do this, then we, then we might be able to do that. So that, that part went forward.
I, I spoke with Chris actually this morning.
Oh, he did?
Oh, yeah. And he is aware of these criteria because one of them is basically, you know, has to be shovel-ready. So you have to be able to move and start construction basically in a hundred and twenty days. That was one of the questions I asked. I said, "How far along are you on your permit process?" You know, you can't really, because of the timing on these things, you can't have a project that's kind of a concept that you're thinking about. You really have to be far along. And he appears that he is, is the question.
Okay. So, so how would we get this information out after Monday? That's, that's another question.
Well, I think that'll be part of what I come back with. It's Paul and I also, Paul Mizwicki and I also spoke this morning about this very topic, the recovery zone bonds. And we probably, we might be doing some media pieces that will say, you know, there's this opportunity that through the American Recovery Reinvestment Act, we had eight point five million. And I think on the, uh, economic development zone bonds, it's a little bit less than that, it's about five million. Um, those were more for municipalities, so we'll share that with municipalities and the town administrators. But for the facility bonds, we have to do kind of a general public announcement.
Yeah.
See what may, developers may be interested in those out there, so... And we need to formulate the criteria in a much more, you know, summary manner, that kind of thing.
Well, I, I just think that, you know, I'm very positive on, you know, on the possibilities. Because, you know, we talk a lot about the importance of creating more, you know, more employment, more jobs in the Cape. And anything that come, you know, it's, it's pretty exciting to me that there's a, you know, there's a possibility of, you know, of this kind of, especially in the upper Cape because the population density is in the upper Cape. So the idea of having a population that would be available to actually fill these jobs as opposed to the lower Cape and the travel that would be involved, you know, means that...
Well, it also enhances the tax base for Sandwich.
Well, and actually, because Sandwich really does not have much of a commercial base in the Cape. It's so residential that they need projects like this to, to be survivable.
So I, there, from our parents' point of view, there's a lot of good stuff here. And we'll make sure that we do what we can.
Yeah. The answer is we are at this point.
Okay. All right, so...
I think we are.
I'd like to suggest that we bring it back as, uh, you know, for a progress report.
I could do that on December second, our next, that's our next meeting.
Okay, on December second, and we, you give us a progress report so that we can, you know, you know, we could, you know, keep this thing going because March is coming up pretty soon.
Yeah, it's a very tight, it's a very tight time, right?
It is, yeah.
And, uh...
December.
Pat, Pat, I'd be happy to give you all the stuff.
Yeah, that's a great project we just worked on in Sandwich, no question.
I think it'd be that, you know. So next, the next...
What else do you have in your mind, Mr. Dougherty?
What do we, well, looking forward, you know, how do we get more than, you know, than, and Helen, we're always glad to see you.
Yeah. Hi, Helen.
Well, you know, pretty glad to see you. But, you know, how do we get more people to come in?
To our meetings.
To our meetings. And, and one of, you know, I, I know that...
Why would we want that?
Well, we talked a lot about that last year.
Okay, so I, I think that, you know, we're looking at, you know, we're coming into a new year.
We could fight. We could argue. That would bring them in, right, Pat? That would bring them in.
No, what we could do is we could...
Well, we're gonna have that. That's coming. Uh, we have the puppy dogs, you said. So we're gonna have that.
Oh, yeah, I'll bring my dog.
She's gonna have it. She's adopting a dog.
All dogs go to heaven, right?
And, and come to animal shelter, right?
Uh-huh.
So we'll get some positive press out of this.
Well, I'll tell you. Well, you remember when microchips first started coming out for dogs? So this is years ago in Falmouth when I was on the Board of Selectmen back in the nineties. And, uh, there was a woman who wanted to come in and demonstrate the microchip, but she needed a dog. So I said I'd offer my dog to do that. And he was maybe two at the time. It was a, he was a golden retriever. So we brought him into the meeting, into the selectman's meeting while she made this presentation on the ident chip, the microchip. And of course, when she brought him in and he saw me and I'm sitting up at a table like this, he jumped right in my lap. Anyway, you gotta be careful if you bring a dog to a meeting. Um, but I think what we need to do is, I think we need to create some agendas for ourselves for next year on these topics.
Yeah. Oh, I think that's true.
And we need to, uh, you know, these big issues that we have, particularly with wastewater, that's a major topic for everybody. And I think we can take a, a true leadership role here by doing that. This, though, the recovery act, the issues with housing, we need to talk about the creation of municipal housing trusts because I think that would be, and when Paul Werschenkis comes in, that would be a good, good topic to do that. Because we have CPA money, short as it is, but there's a bill now. What is it? Um, chapter ninety or bill ninety? I forget.
Chapter ninety-one.
Um, to, to try to, um, uh, change, change the state match so that it stays constant at a certain level.
They're trying to make, maintain a floor on it so that we can then go away.
It could be chapter ninety. It's a session.
It's a chapter ninety. Yeah, that's what it is. So, um, but anyway, there are a lot of really big issues that the towns face and that we face. And if we can lay out maybe a three-month agenda...
Exactly.
That would be terrific.
And that way people, and we'll polish it in the paper, the county...
I can tell you right now, partly January, your agenda will be budget.
Budget, well, that's true.
That's really budget. But certainly, I, I'd like us to lay out like a six-month agenda.
I would like to do that, too.
There'll be some leeway in it, but I think that'd be helpful.
I think it would be very helpful.
And then we could put some, you, some flesh on, you know, on some of these issues. But the other piece is, is that, uh, when, when we went out to different places to, you know, to have meetings, we never really promoted them well. to have meetings, we never really promoted them well in order to bring people in, because when we went to a town, we'd look around, it would be us.
Well, usually the town administrator, or at least, well, Tom Guarino showed up.
Yeah.
A couple of them showed up.
So if we, if we decide to go off campus, if you will, to have meetings, we need to make sure that we do that, we have enough advance notice so that people can-
I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that anymore, Bill. Remember why we did that? That was before we were doing-
It was for the television.
Well, it was before, exactly. We were going to use their facilities to do the televising, and that didn't work out. You're right, it didn't work out. Now, we don't need that. And people can attend your meeting essentially, not just bait, but they can watch your meeting anytime they want.
They can watch it, but the, you know, the idea of being available at a time when people who are, you know, could come, that especially, it's just my, it's just my opinion, but we're missing out on engaging what I'd call the younger adults, the ones that are in the workforce, as far as getting them to come to meeting. Because in order to come to our meetings that we have now, you can't be working, you know, you can't have a job, you know, that requires you to work during the day. So how do we, how do we reach out to-
I have to ask you to defer this, because I have to leave at 3:30, so can I move-
Right, yes, so, but you're right, we do need to take that up.
We've already moved to the, you know.
We've already voted these.
I got that down.
Okay, so you have other things?
I just wanted, because Commissioner Lyons did come in earlier today. She asked me to do a couple of things in, on her behalf. She wanted me to let you know about a Lyme Disease Task Force presentation that Brenda Bollin is going to give on December 10th, at 3 o'clock.
It's a Thursday.
She has sent us a letter on that.
In rooms 11 and 12. So, good, you know about that. She also wanted me to share with you copies of an article from Province Town Banner on the topic that you guys talked about a little bit earlier.
Okay.
There was a bit of a tada-ta between the collaborative and the town of Province Town, and she and, Commissioner Lyons and George Bryant, and I think Paul Nizwicki was there as well.
Yeah, she said in an email.
Responded to some of the issues that were brought up by Province Town. And she also wanted to share with me, share with you something I think that Gussie McCusick had put together for the Water Protection Collaborative, and it was kind of a draft strategic plan for them. So I have copies of that as well, so. Those are the things that Sheila wanted me to do. So I fulfilled my obligation. I do have to let you know that we received a letter from the County Government Finance Review Board. They have not approved our budget, and they have, I'll share the letter with you, they have a couple of issues with it, which we need to deal with. So I will be putting together a proposal to do that.
This is the correct budget?
This is our 2010 budget, that's correct. I also want you to know that in January, there will not be any County Government Finance Review Board.
As of January?
Yeah. It's all part of the whole sheriff's takeover piece.
Oh.
And originally, the sheriff's takeover bill, as initially proposed, had the County Government Finance Review Board reconstituted. And I suggested they put a commissioner on it, it was all sheriffs mostly, along with the state officials, commissioner on it, Tom O'Brien suggested put a treasurer on it. I don't know what happened as the bill moved through the legislature, but whatever happened, the piece that reconstituted it got dropped out. So, and it's one of those, it's one of those, it's one of those where Section, you know, 11 of the Mass Generalizes is hereby eliminated and replaced with the following. And so, originally, as I said, it reconstituted it, but as soon as they took that part out, the replacement ended up being such that there is no County Government Finance Review Board.
So who approves our budget?
There will not be, in, after January, there will not be an approval process.
So we, whatever budget we pass at the Assembly will be our budget?
That will be the case. That is correct.
But we still need to respond to this?
I think we should respond to it.
Oh, yeah. Wait, wait a second. Did it say the revenues aren't adequate?
Um, well-
But so far, the revenues seem adequate.
Well, they are behind, even though we increased our, remember, we increased our deeds tax by about 18 percent. And the revenues are up, but they're not up 18 percent, they're only up 15 percent. Which, so on constitutional terms, actually slower at the registry deeds than it was last year at this time, which is pretty slow. But the fact that we did increase our revenues does help, and I'm not, I'm not sure that they've factored that piece in here adequately. They have to the $813,000 level, I'm not sure that's quite adequate, so we have to look at that.
So you'll, you'll be pursuing this?
I will, yeah.
Okay. And on December 2nd, you could give us an update on that?
Yeah, I will, I will, yeah. I just wanted to let you know, one other thing, as you know, there's Chapter 28 of the Acts 2009, which does the ethics training. We had our ethics session with Mr. Gianotti over at the Assembly a couple of Fridays ago now, time flies. We, at our most recent staff meeting, our department managers' meeting, did the ethics training in a group. So we had, I think, seven or eight people take the ethics committee training that way, that's what we're recommending to all our staffs, that they, they do their staffs at their own staff meeting, do it on a group projector on the wall. I believe Maggie's doing it at the Cape Light Compact Board meeting today.
Well, I got a letter from Mr. Gianotti telling me that we have till April of next year.
That's correct, they extended the deadline.
So Maggie had suggested to us earlier that we, on reorganization at the first of the year, that we all do that.
Do the training on that.
Together?
Together, for the county piece.
We'll set up a projector, we'll project it out.
Right now, the both of us have, you know, have our receipt for, for the town, because we're like a-
Well, you only need to do it once, you don't need to do it for every position.
That wasn't clear at all.
Well, it's absolutely clear. Yeah, absolutely, you don't need to do it twice.
All right, well, in any case, as a matter, I think that that's something that we need to incorporate into our reorganization, that we-
Well, we will, we'll do that, yeah.
Okay. And that way, that two-year thing will, you know, would automatically recur.
There'll be a number of us who have taken it a bunch of times, anyway.
And it would expire in January, which is a good time.
It's good for two years, I believe, it's every two years thereafter. One, the first time, and then every two years thereafter.
Okay. And the final subject that I wanted to just put on the table, is that we have a lot of money, county money, invested through the Cape Light Compact into the electric co-op. And in this coming year, the turbine projects that are in Brewster and Harwich, we're going to need a lot of financial analysis and support. And I was looking to Mark to do that, and I think that in December, I think you have to give us some sense of how much of your time is going to be needed for that, so that we can, you know, know what's going, you know, how the rest of the administration is going to be handled.
Yeah, Maggie and I, over the, over the summer and pretty much through October, we spent a lot of time on that with Brewster and with Harwich. The good news is, is Brewster Town Meeting approved the, the co-op doing the turbines. Harwich Town Meeting did that last week, we were there. So that's good news, we're moving forward with those.
But now, the town's expectation is they're waiting-
That's higher, yeah.
You know, is that, you have to get that done to go over that. And since we've got a lot of dough that's invested in it, I want to make sure that then, you know, that this is as much a possible monument that we can build the rest of the, you know, renewable and alternate energy schemes that the co-op's supposed to support.
Yeah. I only have one more thing. And that is, as you know, for the second time, we did the Gatsby 45, the OPEB calculations. We did that through the retirement office. We had the Seagull Company do it, we did it for, I believe, 30 individual units on the Cape, all the towns, including Falmouth and Harwich. It's other post-employment benefits. So it really is the calculation of the unfunded liability associated with health insurance costs for, for us and retirees, for any other benefits that we get. Mostly it's health and dental insurance for, for most of the units. We did it for, as I said, 30 different units, including Falmouth, including Harwich, the county. And so those results are all, have been sent to all of the towns. And just to let you know, it's fairly hefty number, the county's liability, I just had that number, what did I do? And it's calculated two ways. It's calculated by setting up a trust fund to fund the liability, and it's calculated by not setting up a trust to fund the liability. We have not set up the trust yet. But our liability was, our annual required contribution-
For OPEB.
For OPEB is 7.484 million on the pay-as-you-go calculation, that's without the trust. And with the trust, pre-funded, assuming an eight and a quarter percent interest rate, is 4.8 million, is our annually required contribution.
Annual?
Our ARC, yeah.
So it's either five, either post a five or seven and a half?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's before we open the door.
I will tell you that I don't know of any entities that I've spoke with that is towns that are actually funding this.
I'd heard that.
Well, what about, like Arlington, they were one of the first ones to set up.
Arlington and Wellesley, Wellesley went to for an override at one point in time, they actually went twice. The first time, I think it failed, the second time, I think it passed. More recently, I don't know, I don't know what their status is, because obviously after the economic downturn, things really got worse, not better.
Yes, I don't know if they're, if that trust that they established covered the OPEB, or if it was only for the retirement-
There, no, there was, general legislation passed last year that allows a town to set up a trust.
A trust, for the benefits.
It doesn't require it to do it through the retirement board, they can set up their own individual trust. There is generic legislation for that now.
I think, yeah, I think it was like Arlington or Andover that-
Arlington got special legislation, Wellesley got special legislation to do it. And since that time, there's generic legislation. I don't know of, I don't know of any on the Cape that have actually done that.
No, I don't think anyone on the Cape has done.
So I don't think Falmouth's on it, or Harwich is on it.
No. It's always been pay-as-you-go?
Yeah, it's always been pay-as-you-go. There is a move, this did come up, as you know, at the retirement, at the retirement seminar, I've been at, this did come up, because they're looking at the funding schedule. And there is, apparently, I haven't been able to get my hands on it, there's a bill that's been filed at the legislature that would change the funding schedule. We talked about this in the presentation that I gave. And one of the ideas that will come up in the hearings and discussions about this bill is, maybe it's time to also include the OPEB in, in the funding schedule for retirement, so that you use a part of the funds to fund the retirement liabilities, and you use a part of the funds to fund the OPEB liabilities. Because right now, it's being ignored, and eventually, it's all going to catch up with us. You know, Moody's, or S&amp;P, or Fitch, or somebody's going to say, what are you doing about that liability? And most towns just don't have the resources to do anything about it right now.
Okay, but it's, it's out there, it's like that hanging, that sort of, down place, you know, it's hanging over our heads.
It's out there, and we, now, now Gatsby 45 required us to know about it, so now we know about it. So the next step will be, what, what are you doing about it?
Well, if a problem is, if a problem can't be solved, it's not a problem, you know. Maybe that's the attitude.
Eventually, it will be a problem.
Yeah, okay, but, okay, so aware of it, and what-
Would individual towns be required to have their own actuarial?
That's what we did. We actually, this book, this is for Bronson County, those two numbers I gave you, each of the participants in this project, the other 29, they all have their, they all have, including all of the towns, including Falmouth, including Harwich, they have their own calculation, and those two numbers specifically for their liabilities.
Okay, so we just to-
They're required for their audit, otherwise they will get a qualified audit. And that's really why, why we've done it this way.
We're going to have to get over to that hearing, but for you to leave, what I'd like to ask you to do, since we, since we, you know, have brought up the subject of agendas, is perhaps you could make a suggestion as to timing on these different items that you know that we're interested in, wastewater.
Yeah, well, actually, I did, I think I'm going to contact, start with you, Patty, and Paul Nizwicki for, for next meeting.
Yes, December 2nd.
December 2nd. Because I think Andrew was going to come back at that, because that was the day you were originally scheduled to make your kind of final determination on the Water Protection Collaborative. Yeah. So we'll get them in, you can then either decide to, you know, take it, under advisement for another week, or make your decision, right? So, you know, we'll do it that way.
Okay.
And then I think, you know, for the remainder of this year, there's only a couple of, there's only really three meetings left, there's not many more than that.
I think it's-
The second will do that. We need to talk about my goals and objectives, and then we can have a set, I wanted to do the revenue, no, Sheila asked for kind of a revenue 101, so I put that together, I did send it to the two of you. She could not get it, so I printed it out for her today. We can go through that, and kind of go through the budgeted revenues, and the budgeted, kind of what a budget looks like for that. And then I think we'll have a session that we can kind of plan out next year. So that's really the next three meetings.
Okay, so, we just have to put that together again, put some flesh on that. That'd be great. Okay.
That's it.
So I don't know if you guys have anything further to report. If you do, that's fine, you guys can continue, I just need to get over, this is on the co-op transfer that we did.
Oh, yeah.
Stacy's going to be there, she's nice enough, as you know, she just had her, she just had her baby, so.
Well, she, let's see, is that the-
I told her to bring the baby, that was very effective.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
That's right.
She's not, though.
Is that the second kid that she's had since she was born?
She has two, she has two children, I believe, yes.
That's wonderful.
I need to back up, too.
So if you'll excuse me, and if I can just ask you to record the time that you-
Do you have anything else you want to take up right now?
I just wanted to see if there's anything that, that was at, we, you know, we had Veterans Day, we did the, let's see, we had the suicide prevention update on Thursday, and No Place for Hate, they met over at Hyannis Community Center to follow up an community meeting. They were making progress on that. We both went to the Orleans Inn for the-
Cape Selectment Council's meeting.
The meeting. And I believe that, that's pretty much, but, oh, we went to the, the MPO meeting, did have the Corps of Engineers at it, and the Corps of Engineers, let's see, public relations person, basically said that, you know, that they were engaging in the spirit of cooperation, but to the direct question, would you change the contract so that people will be working